At six o'clock, thank you all for being here tonight, going to a short meeting as well. Any public comment, Jeff? Very well, doesn't there been any changes to the agenda?
Just to the agenda section, it was a chance for the council to affirm that this is the agenda they want to undertake.
Very well. It's like lots of approval.
I have no problem with that.
The change to the agenda is an opportunity for you guys to give a thumbs up that this is an agenda you can proceed with.
Yep. All right, Wes, do you have, are you in? There you are.
All right. Thanks. Um, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, it could be a little louder.
Okay, sorry.
No, we can do it.
What about now?
There we go.
Yeah, there we go. Okay.
Great. All right, you're up.
Okay, so for the first item, we have resolution twenty twenty five four four fifty four, which is an update to the personnel policy. So I have sent the the proposed resolution to the council and my staff report accompanying it. So I will just briefly run through my staff report and outline the proposal for for the new staff positions. So what I submitted for your review was a was a strategic reorganization of city staff things, but specifically the establishment of a finance director position and a new facilities and grounds maintenance worker role. This proposal reflects a proactive approach to enhancing the efficiency, fiscal health and operational excellence of the city of Stevenson with a clear understanding of the direct budgetary implications. The financial landscape for the finance director position involves a financial landscape for municipalities that is increasingly complex with evolving regulations for reporting requirements and the necessity for sophisticated financial planning. The existing deputy clerk treasurer position, which will be replaced if this is adopted, no longer fully encompasses the breadth and the depth of the expertise needed for the city's financial affairs. And so this new finance director position would is designed to to have oversight of budgeting and financial planning, compliance and reporting, investment and debt management, internal controls and risk management and strategic advice. And and the proposed salary still for this position would be eighty nine thousand to one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars annually, which is the competitive rate for the level of responsibility within Washington State municipalities. The justification for the facilities and grounds maintenance worker position. This is really about maintaining pride in our our public spaces and facilities. You with the with the increase in demand on the on the public works team to maintain the city buildings, parks, landscaping and special events. Uh, this this position will will directly address that need. And so this role will be responsible for societal services for city buildings, groundskeeping and minor repairs and event support. And this would be a seasonal part-time position, twenty five to thirty hours a week from March to November. And the pay range would be twenty dollars to twenty six thirty one per hour. Now, when it comes to the budgetary impact of these new roles, the finance director position, that that as mentioned before, would have a proposed entry level salary of eighty nine thousand and then the estimated annual benefits of thirty five thirty five percent will be thirty one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and so one thing to keep in mind is that the deputy clerk treasurer role that was budgeted for twenty twenty five, when what when that was still filled, was budgeted for a base salary of ninety three thousand and an annual cost of one hundred and twenty five thousand. So actually, if the financial director came in at the entry level rate, we would actually be saving five thousand dollars more than was budgeted for the twenty twenty five deputy clerk treasurer role. And then for the facility and grounds maintenance worker, as mentioned, the entry level wage would be twenty dollars an hour. And 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 the estimated benefits would be roughly around seven thousand dollars. And so the total estimated cost would be twenty six thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. And this would mostly come from the general fund and then a a portion of the cost could be cross charged to the water or sewer fund. If if a specific time tracking justifies such allocations. And so that's pretty much the background on this. And I I welcome any questions you have. I think this is a really important step for us in in getting up to full staffing, and I think will leave us in a much better position.
Let's see, I have a number of questions. Can we go ahead and start? Okay. Is the, I I don't like to make any assumptions, but I'm assuming because of the change in job title and description and are we looking at using existing staff to fill that new financial director position?
That'll be competitive. That'll be competitive.
Competitive, yes.
Is. My understanding is that currently twenty percent of the treasurer clerk position we have now is funded for code enforcement. And when I tried to cross-reference the the job just drop job descriptions and obligations or essential duties, I didn't see anything in the new position that discussed anything dealing with code enforcement.
Okay.
So who's who's gonna, so there's a couple others here. The PRRs that are currently being handled by that position. I don't see anything regarding that listed in the new position. And yeah, sort of personal record and request and see what else was there. Oh, and then on the new job description where it indicates acts as city's risk manager, maintain incident and accident files. Uh, it's kind of a human resources role. So is that position going to be taking on HR responsibilities as well? So that's that's a lot of questions.
Sure. No, those are very good questions. In terms of the PRRs, Tiffany, our planning and public works assistant has taken that on in the past few months. So that responsibility has shifted. In terms of the code enforcement, I believe I I think, you know, I I I'm not sure who was taking on that role before. I I believe Anders may have. I'm not sure where that responsibility fell, but I think that's something we need to take a look at more closely because I don't think that that when it came to code enforcement, that that there were standard procedures or or authority outlined there. So I I I know in looking through my files, I I think we, uh, this may have been a long time ago. We we had contracted with White Salmon to hire our time code enforcement officer. So I don't know if we've done that in the past. So I will have to do a little more research on where exactly the the code enforcement lies.
And then if Anders wasn't doing it, wasn't being done at all. But supposedly we had funding from the state that we we all suppose I've been told by our last city administrator that twenty percent of his salary was supposed to be for the purpose of code enforcement.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. I am, yeah, and I I I think that I I I think you raise a good point. I think that that leads us to another a bigger discussion around what to do in terms of code enforcement. I think that responsibility for the time being could could fall to me. Um, and and I think that with Tiffany and Caitlin and and the different responsibilities that they're taking on, you know, as as we've had to shift things around with the with staff as as we've as we've had a lot of turnover, I think we could look into how we could divide up those duties.
And just as a general comment, I will tell you, I am very happy that we're thinking of talking about a utilities maintenance worker. It's something that we desperately need, but I've also been told in the past that that we don't have the resources to pay that position. So I'm kind of curious why that might have changed.
So the, there's two answers to that. So obviously, the when Leona left, we decided as a group to separate the duties almost right down the middle. So this, the finance director part is circling back around and fulfilling that that need to to get the other half of those those duties taken care of. That, as Wes has already talked about, the the resources for that are are built in, but that's, you know, we already got a person that's kind of in that space holder, that placeholder. So we'll slide that in and that that is going to be pretty close to what we're looking at. The utilities director or the utilities maintenance worker. An identified need, and it's gonna be taking a real, we'll take a really close look at the budget. We're gonna wait to see how things shake out because Carolyn was working, had additional salary because of her engineering credentials. So once we see, get a better idea of how the the wage, how it settles out between the what Cody's gonna be making, what gets freed up with Carolyn, they will be able to have, take a really good look at what's left. As you pointed out, it's something that we desperately need. So finding, making sure, making sure that we can afford it, but then finding what, you know, making it kind of a priority to work that out.
Okay. Wes just said was looking to take that funding from the general fund instead of the street fund, uh, which is where Leon was looking for that. Um, so it'd be a new position funded only through the general fund, supplementing the street fund essentially without without moving the money.
And then as far as the HR goes, I believe that 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 was part of Andre's job. That's always been in that chair. So that the answer is yes. And then the main thing also, the the reason that we're in, uh, this is part of a special meeting is we really want to get that job posted as quickly as possible.
The finance.
Yes.
Awesome. Well, in both of them, right, but the finance one.
The important one, the priority is the finance director and we will not just on the radar, make sure to take keep the ball rolling on the the maintenance.
I know the the maintenance one, it's, it can be hard to find the person who is looking through part-time. Doesn't want to work in the winter. Not easy to fill, but you pick the right person, it can change. We know it can change the way the downtown looks.
Yeah, and that, you know, that, just throwing it out there as a as a, what if, what if we have someone that is a snowbird looking for a couple hours that loves fluttering around that that.
Oh, I'm not saying we weren't, I'm just saying that, I know that was one of the things that they were discussing before, so.
So looking at the the items here, Wes, we've got the salary schedule and the personnel policies and they're kind of tied together. But we can do one after the other. So would that the would be resolution twenty twenty five dash four five five would be the second one?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see that now that down below.
Sorry.
Four, five, six.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a concept. Even have somebody with code. We, I agree that that's a totally different question because we really never had code enforcement in this town for many, many years. And so I, um, I don't, and on his credit, tried, but I don't really think we even had effective code enforcement then because he didn't have all the tools he needed. So and the maintenance worker, the comments I'm getting from citizens is they sure wish that was a full-time position. But I think we get, this is better than nothing if we can see, but I think it's pennies on the dollar for this position because this is a good worker can go out there for this wage and really make our city shine. So I mean, I I would be supporting even a full-time worker now, but I'll take what I can get as we all will. So, um, and I'm willing to make a motion if you're ready.
So before you do, uh, as far as code enforcement, it's not, it's a, it's a very common process to, you know, contract someone else. I know the city casket blocks had someone that they use, but sometimes having someone that isn't from here.
Yeah.
Part of the code enforcement that hires specifically for that. Enforcement actually happens.
Oh, yeah.
What what determines whether the position is competitive?
That we'll put it in our paper and or go through the normal hiring process and go through the hiring process instead of just, we don't have. We want to make sure that we can get, take a look at all of the options as far as a well-rounded candidate. We're not ready to hire from within that yet unless that person rises to the top of.
Okay, and and I guess, and that that's my question is, is because we didn't do a competitive process for a public works director. But now we're doing doing a competitive process for for this. And so I'm trying, I'm trying to get my mind, why, what is the determining factors for us to move one way versus the other way?
Personnel policy dictates or indicates that we prefer to hire from within. We're, we are not, I'm not ready to hire from within on that.
Okay, just a point of order also, um, the the clerk treasure position was formed by ordinance. And Robert, maybe you can help me out here, but I believe we have to eliminate that position for RCW prior to us passing any resolution to move forward on that, correct?
I don't think it's correct, but you caught me sort of on the top of my head.
Did we violate anything if we did that emotion of that effect? Or would it violate anything if we did a motion to that effect? So it's actually.
Might be a Robert.
Yeah, that's why I'm giving that to Robert right now. I just want to make sure we got.
Like that day of our best address before the meeting to staff so that they can have that answer prepared and not forget something to you. Um, the position that's being eliminated is deputy clerk treasurer.
I think I think as a point of order, it's probably not wise to criticize another council member. Does that staff criticizing?
I found this, I found this this afternoon, so that's why I was asking.
Just, I'll make that point over. I think that was uncalled for.
All right. It helps, it helps the meetings go if the council communicates their concerns in advance.
Yeah, we don't work for you.
All right, can we take it? Seriously.
Talk to him.
Literally, I'm just now reading this. So I mean, I can't answer the question.
Yeah, and I found that this afternoon.
I appreciate it. Yeah, no, I just, I've been in Portland all day, so nobody's contacted me regarding this. So it's containing more than two seconds for you to do some digest.
All right, so.
You want to move to the other two resolutions?
Yeah, we can do that. My thought after cuff is that we can we can approve the job description for the finance director and then come back on eliminating the other part because, like I said, getting this job posted in the hiring process underway is kind of important.
I would. What about?
Agree.
Could you want to make the motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a a motion to approve for a resolution twenty twenty five dash four fifty four, the personnel policy for the city administrator wouldn't, well, okay, I don't think I need to read the rest of that.
First and a second, any further discussion? All fair to say. All right, and then I can motion for twenty twenty five dash four five five.
Um, I'll make a motion for resolution five dash four five five, amend the twenty twenty five salary schedule. Second.
So first and a second, any further discussion? All fair to say. And all right, Wes, so if you could, uh, maybe it's between Wes or we're gonna use Cody. I guess you're on here in the agenda. If you want to get us started.
Sure. So, uh, just as a background for this, so our interlocal agreement with Skamania County for our public works and planning duties. We have that signed and and currently the administrative fee for for that works, it's at ten percent. And due to the cost of doing business in general, the that fee, that fee has increased to fifteen percent at the request of the county. So that is the cost of the fee that 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 we would need to pay to maintain our contract with them. In terms of more background, I'll turn, I'll turn that over over to Cody, um, because because he he, um, he has more details than that, but that's, it's actually the long and short of it.
Yeah, Wes covered most of it, but essentially we have an interlocal agreement with community counting. It covers our public works as well as some of our building inspection stuff. Um, they perform tasks like chip seal, crack seal, paving. Um, like Wes mentioned, our current fee for them is eleven percent admin fee. They want to bump that to fifteen. Cost of labor, materials, salaries, everything is kind of associated with that. They've been pretty firm on us doing this, or they do have the option just to deny our work. And they said that they will be out money if we cannot fulfill this need. Um, so I did run some numbers. We have two projects kind of on hold for paving from them right now. For those two projects, we would be looking at spending an extra three thousand two hundred and seventy four dollars and change from bumping from eleven to fifteen percent. Drastic, but a change.
And so then just to fill in the rest of the details, we would like to present those contracts to the group, but the interlocal agreement has to match the contract. So that's why we had to go A to B on this one.
So question, question I have.
Query.
I assume that they they, you know, we contract with them for private for these services. Did anybody negotiate this bump?
We asked for justification.
Yeah.
And their justification was cost of materials and.
Well, okay, we're not, we're not talking about an adjustment to the cost of a service. We're talking about the the adjustment to the cost of administrative fees, right?
Yes.
So as the contracts increase, as the cost of providing the services increase by keeping the same percentage of cost of administration, their fees should be going up. Why are they going from eleven to fifteen percent?
Not personally following.
Well, if you have a hundred thousand dollar contract and next year you do a two hundred thousand dollar contract, the administrative fee is going to double, just just at that same eleven percent. So by going to fifteen, we're giving them an additional bump. And I don't, how have they? Have we, did we do any research on what other cities are paying? For those who've demonstrated costs or anything, I mean, it's, I I'm trying to see the justification, not. See the justification, not, not in just adjusting an amount, but adjusting a percentage because that's going to be in perpetuity.
Is it the administrative labor?
Yeah.
But imagine that's some of it. Um, the other part that they were really big on is fifteen percent aligns them with the federal rate. That is the federal administrative rate. And they have the option to do either choose their own or go up to federal.
Okay, well, that would make sense to.
And then, and, and I called Heidi to ask her specifically about this. And she said it's because of that demand, this right? That they moved to which is at fifteen percent. Across the board right now.
That makes sense. Yeah, I would like to see that justification.
Yeah. It's the demand, this minimus rate that, uh, the feds. Allow, um, agencies to charge for their, uh, federal, uh, contracts. And so they, they also. Any other we haven't been saying. So. That's why.
Which makes sense. Pardon? I said that makes sense.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion.
Almost to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash four five six, uh, mending the, uh, committee county. Or the interlocal agreement between the city and Skamania County.
Second. First and second, any further discussion? All there's aye? You all? All right, so. Um, we are going to move into executive session next, but, um, to prevent any. Labs, I want to make sure that the tech is in order before we rush into executive session. So, um, when Ben is back over here.
Kind of get the answer from Mr. Crowder shortly.
All right, so we are getting ready to enter into executive session. Under RCW four two, four two point three zero point one one zero one I. I'll announce the time once we're prepared to make that cut over.
I apologize, I wasn't, how much time are you asking for?
Not, nothing yet. I want to make sure that, that we, um.
We take no.
Have another hoops tonight. So Wes, you're going to have to switch over to me and then I want to make sure before you pause the zoom, I'll announce the time. How much time do you think we need?
I mean, ten minutes for one, twenty, thirty.
Let's do thirty, okay.
And Wes, you should, uh, close zoom to open another. Or be prepared to.
Get aware.
Make sure that it's not.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll, I'll log into Zoom now.
So let me know when you're ready to talk.
Video on.
So.
There we go.
So, um. Council's law rep. Robert will proceed as directed.
There we go. City Attorney shall take direction as given during executive session.
But he said. All right, so before we adjourn, you wanted to. Get something on the agenda.
For our regular meeting. Yeah, pass it around and also I am going to express a little bit of consternation because this is something that Wes I've given this to you. Previously. I've even given a copy to council previously, but because our. Transfer benefit district tax sales tax is going to be going into effect or has gone into effect as of the first of July. This is something that needs to be addressed. And we're going to have constituents that voted for this that are going to want to see something on their bills.
So, uh. Yes, this absolutely will be on the agenda. And we will make sure because I felt like there was a very robust conversation about and it got everybody on the same page. So it feels like. The conversation has been had. We just need to get it. So the answer is yes, and then we'll find. I understand in the meeting. On the video, so we can all reacquaint ourselves on the things that we agreed on. So thank you for that.